Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Family and friends, city staff. Thank you all for joining us for this Portsmouth City Council meeting. I want to take a moment to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Attorney Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Thank you all for being here tonight. And now, I'll acknowledge my colleagues on council and ask them to note their attendance electronically.
Seven members of the city council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, if everyone would please stand for a moment of silence, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I am aware that I did do the roll call a little out of order. But in any event, we have done that. So we will now move into our council minutes. And we have the minutes of a called meeting on May 12, 2025, a called meeting on May 13, 2025, and a regular meeting on May 13, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Please vote electronically. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
Can you vote again, please? The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement for this evening?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now moving on our agenda to public hearings. Item 25-137, public hearing on honorary street name designation. And it is item A, HSD 25-01. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Prentice Park Resolution granting the request of D.P. Branch for an honorary street name designation to designate a portion of Randolph Street as D.A.P. Senior Way in recognition of D.A.P. Senior, former pastor of Zion Bethel United Church of Christ in Portsmouth. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. Planning Commission recommends approval. The actual resolution reads, "A resolution designating an honorary street name of D.A.P. Senior Way for the portion of Randolph Street located between Des Moines Avenue and Lansing Avenue."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I believe we have some members of the family present with us. If you would please come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes for your presentation. You don't have to take the full 10 minutes, but that's what's allotted to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
My name is Devish Jeanette Peace Branch. I live at 4421 Templar Drive in Portsmouth, Virginia, in the churchland section of our city. Good evening to Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, to the city attorney clerk, deputy clerk, and all the councilmen and women that are present this evening. As I stated, I am Devish Jeanette Peace Branch, a 45-year resident of Portsmouth, Virginia, and I am requesting a street name change in the Prentice Park community. My family and I desire to have a one-block portion of Randolph Street from its intersection with Des Moines Avenue and heading eastward to where it ends at Lansing Avenue. Changed to D.A.P. Senior Way. I'm inclined and so delighted to ask for this change in honor of my father, Devlaming Atwood Peace, as he was a 40-year resident and major contributor and supporter to the city of Portsmouth and its residents. During his time here, he affected innumerable lives and had a major positive impact on the city at large. Until his passing in November of 2019, he was the pastor of Zion Bethel United Church of Christ located at 1617 Des Moines Avenue, which is situated at the northwest corner of the intersection where D.A.P. Senior Way would begin. Under his leadership, Zion Bethel grew in membership, community involvement, and became known by many as the friendly church on the corner. Upon arrival in 1980, my father proceeded to improve the church and prepare for growth by building a new sanctuary. This decision alone immediately improved the property's value, the surrounding property values, the aesthetics of the intersection, and that of the community as a whole. The years that followed are layered with community involvement. For many summers, Zion Bethel Vacation Bible School served an average of at least 100 children and many adults each night. This event provided dinner, arts and crafts, valuable lessons for life, and even transportation. He spearheaded a noonday prayer time, but Mondays at noon were a special time for seniors to gather for Bible study, prayer, and lunch. Rap Time, a program designed for youth to come and share their experiences with their peers in a safe place, was led by Dr. Peace on Saturdays. The youth ministry hosted trunk-or-tree events, back-to-school rallies, and Easter egg hunts for the community kids. And every second and fourth Saturday was also dedicated to the feeding of the hungry. All were welcomed, and many repeat visitors eventually became members of the church. D.A.P. established that Friday nights were dedicated to the drug and substance abuse ministry. Open to those who struggled with addictions of all sorts, motivational speakers and ministers led the sessions in an effort to help citizens of Portsmouth overcome and walk victoriously in life. The Portsmouth Drug Court Program recognized this as a program that if attended, participants could achieve successful completion of drug court requirements. I have witnessed the dedication my father showed to families, particularly in the Brighton, Prentice Park, Truxton, and Crook communities. He created and served as president of the South Side Interdenominational Religious Coalition of Portsmouth, Virginia for 30, over 30 years. This coalition of seven churches serves Portsmouth citizens and those of the Hampton Roads community by providing families with food and financial donations to help with mortgages, rent, and public utility bills. My father served as a member of the Civil Service Commission for over 30 years. He loved having an opportunity to have a voice in putting trustworthy firefighters and police officers on the streets of Portsmouth to protect and serve. He even ran for city council in 1985 with the desire to promote peace for Portsmouth. He carried this desire to see peaceful gatherings and walk the streets of Prentice Park in organized drug marches, the goal of which was to eradicate the distribution of illegal drugs in the community. Over the years, these marches led to the identification and closing of at least three known drug houses in the community. In September of 2019, he agreed to bring Christian and Muslim men together to show their solidarity in being a positive presence in our community. The Stop the Violence March through Prentice Park, Dale's Homes, and Lincoln Park was organized to bring awareness to this issue, culminating in a rally held at Zion Bethel where a national youth minister of the Nation of Islam spoke to nearly 200 men, Muslims and Christians united in peace. My father opened the doors of Zion Bethel many times to families without a church home who needed a place to eulogize their family members. He allowed Zion Bethel to be used to serve Thanksgiving meals to the homeless. For several years, Zion Bethel was a designated shelter for the homeless during the cold winter months where he organized round-the-clock monitoring and meals. My father's office hours were filled with encouraging words and uplifting advice to those who walked by as he stood on the corner of Randolph Street and Des Moines Avenue, praying with pastors by and reminding them there was a better and brighter day coming. My dad volunteered several years at many schools in Portsmouth during Dr. Seuss Week, reading to children, and he even chaperoned field trips. He even offered prayers at city council meetings, just like we're here tonight. In 1990, he was the baccalaureate speaker for me and my husband's graduating class of IC Norcom. In 1985, he founded and was the Dean, CEO, and President of Union Christian Bible Institute in Portsmouth, Virginia, that he created to provide an affordable place that the local community could come and receive an exceptional education. My father has been repeatedly recognized as an exceptional community leader. Senate Joint Resolution Number 274 and Senate Resolution Number 81 are bills that commend my father for his hard work and continued dedication to the people of Portsmouth. He was recognized for his 35th pastoral anniversary by the 44th President of the United States, Barack Obama. At his funeral, it was declared that November 7 was to be known officially as Reverend D.A.P.'s Day in the city of Portsmouth. There are numerous other accolades that my father deserves to be included here, but I have reluctantly decided to omit them for brevity. Reverend Peace was also a loving husband of 51 years, a father of five children, nine grandchildren, and 10 great-grandchildren, with whom you could often find him cutting grass, sitting on the porch, and, as he'd say, watching the world go by, and lending countless displays of support for his family in many different ways right here in our city. I'm a direct beneficiary of my father's dedication to my family. All my life, he was a provider, protector, and advocate. This led me on an amazing life of success. In the spring of 2020, I was honored to be named Middle School Teacher of the Year for Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm confident that if it were not for my father and mother's guidance and support over the entirety of my life, I would not have been equipped to serve the families of Portsmouth by teaching each and every child with the love and spirit of excellence they deserve. I believe I have shared just a portion of why my father is so deserving of this honor. He truly embodied the lyrics of the Portsmouth Song. He believed in the best of all kinds of people. He worked tirelessly to make it a good place to live, work, and play. He endeavored each day to help one another and treat each one as a brother. His favorite Bible verse comes from the book of Matthew, Chapter 25. It speaks to the Lord separating the sheep from the goats. The sheep, it says in verse 34, and I paraphrase, "are blessed and have a place prepared for them by God. These are the ones that feed the hungry, gave drink to the thirsty, took in the stranger, clothed the naked, and visited the sick and imprisoned." That was my dad. I'm confident that the community would have a great appreciation for his name being memorialized on the street that he did so much work sharing with others and spreading God's love. Thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing item. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you're not required to have signed up. If you will, if you come forward to speak, you need to state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Sheila Joseph at 139 Grand Street. And I didn't know tonight they was going to recognize him about the things we done together, Nation of Islam and different ones met. I would love to see that happen because Pastor Peace meant a lot to a lot of people, and I was one of them. Whenever we wanted to do community activities and bring different believers together, he was for that. He didn't mind if he was Muslim or whatever. I feel that a lot of people are divided by their belief, and I thank God for the opportunity to recognize him as the person have a street, and that would be all I need to see.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak, you're not required to have signed up. Come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, and thank you. Our next item, item B, UP-25-03. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution for this item?
Yes, sir. George Washington Highway Resolution granting the request of J., excuse me, R. Brown for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment on a portion of 2012 Victory Boulevard parcel designated as 4806 George Washington Highway in the general mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Washington Victory LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-2503, to R. Brown to operate an entertainment establishment on a portion of the parcel having an address of 2012 Victory Boulevard."
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present? Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. I mean, 10 minutes, excuse me.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Renata Brown. My address is 3517 Raffa Circle. Thank you for having me tonight, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, City Attorney, and Counsel. My name is Renata Brown, and I'm a proud native of Portsmouth, Virginia, where I was born and raised. I'm a devoted mother of seven and a passionate entrepreneur with the talent for launching businesses. Over the years, I've developed a reputation as a prolific business starter, always eager to bring new ideas to life and create opportunities for growth and success. Bar Nine is the sister location to my other restaurant in Newport News, Virginia. Bar Nine is a local upscale restaurant and lounge that brings great vibes, good energy, and excellent food where flavor tells a story. When entering Bar Nine, you will step inside and leave ordinary behind. We offer an elevated dining experience and a stylish and inviting atmosphere. We're located in the heart of Portsmouth, and we're known for our modern design and attention to detail. Bar Nine combines contemporary elegance with a laid-back vibe, making it the perfect destination for both intimate dinners and lively gatherings. Whether you're indulging in expertly crafted cocktails or savoring a menu full of delectable dishes, Bar Nine promises an unforgettable experience for food and drink enthusiasts alike. With this stylish setting, exceptional service, and curated selection of flavors, Bar Nine has become a favorite local hotspot for those seeking quality and luxury. Bar Nine has also partnered with Neighborhood Security, where we have security that comes in every day after 6:00 p.m., and we're also contracted with the Portsmouth Police Department, where we have an additional three officers that comes out on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move that we defer this item until our last meeting of July. Once the public hearing is closed.
Excuse me.
You need to close.
Right, I need to close the public hearing first. Sorry. Sorry, sir. That's my fault. This is a public hearing item. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can do so. Come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Excuse me, sir. Now you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I move that we defer this item to our last meeting of July.
There's a motion to defer. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to defer to the last meeting of July? Any additional discussion? Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you clarify why you want to move it to July?
Well, for myself, Councilman Tillage, I have not had a chance to visit the establishment, and I'm sure some of my other colleagues haven't. As you know, we've had a rather busy month. And it just give us more time to do a site visit.
We had the motion and the second. We've had the discussion. Councilman Hugel, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, my second, based on the fact that we're going through this discussion about reviewing our zoning ordinance for use permits, and so want to give the planning department some additional time to continue working out the language that we may enact going forward. And so, rather than jumping the gun and approving or disapproving, if we give planning a little bit more time to work out the zoning language, I think we'll be in a better spot. As I recall, Mr. City Manager, we asked you to take a look at the number of these kinds of use permit items that are in the queue so that we know whether it's appropriate to proceed because we only have one or two, or if we have a whole slew that really warrant us deferring. So if you could follow up on that with us, it would be helpful.
Attorney Graham Williams, you have the floor.
I think what council's trying to clarify is that there are provisions within our code that they want to examine closer in order to evaluate this particular entity in accordance with what we have on the books and what we anticipate might be related to that. And so, they're asking for more time to do that, for the record. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. If we are asking for more time to look into the new or proposed way forward on the new code, before the July meeting then, I would like to request that we... Do we have a work session where we can get Dr. Russell to come in front of us? I am hesitant to delay business owners that might be, you know, trying to set up in a certain time period. I know, based on what you're saying, Councilman Hugel, Vice Mayor Moody, the purpose around it, I just want to know, can we then set some parameters and timers on us to then get moving faster so that we can, you know, give answers to upcoming businesses? If that's the pleasure of the council.
Thank you, ma'am. And right now, I'll defer the... Madam Attorney has called for the floor. Madam, you have the floor.
I just want to be clear. We're not deferring this to consider future language that would not be appropriate. The language that's applicable at the time of the application is what applies. So we're not considering future language. But the discussion that you're describing about a work session about that future language is appropriate to get the ball moving. I just, for the record, want to distinguish the two. Thank you.
And so, one of the things, if I could add, Mr. Carter has indicated he will be bringing back a work session for us to have that level of discussion. Is that appropriate, sir?
That's correct.
Very good. So we have the deferral, we have the second, we had the discussion. So now, would you please vote electronically?
This is for the deferral, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
This item is deferred by a vote of four three.
Thank you. Our next item is a two-part item, item C, which is Z-24-02. The first is an ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Citywide ordinance granting the request of S. Riggs to amend City Code, Chapter 40.2, zoning ordinance to include seaplane base to list of uses. Require a use permit to operate a seaplane base within a given zoning district, and such additional modifications as may be deemed appropriate. The Planning Commission recommends approval. And the actual ordinance reads, "An ordinance to amend and reordain, Chapter 40.2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to authorize a seaplane base use in zoning District D1 through T6 by adding a new definition to Section 40.2-212, public and institutional uses referencing the definition in Article 6C definitions and adding the use to Tables 40.2-216 Use Table and 40.2-301, 1, Minimum Off-Street Parking Standards."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sam Riggs. I live at 84 Lakeside Drive, Newport News, Virginia. Thank you for the time to come and speak on this this evening, Mayor, City Manager, Vice Mayor, Attorney City Clerks, and Councilmembers. I prepared a presentation at the request of Mayor Moody to add some videos of the approaches and departures.
You mean Mayor Glover.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mayor Glover. I'm very, very sorry.
We look alike.
Same hairstyle.
We do, we do have that. If you guys want to look at that at some point in time. So I'm just going to go off of what I've got here, which is the same thing that I had there. We moved here from Texas 2023 in December. I'm just going to go off the cuff here and just speak candidly. My wife and I are both pilots. Rachel flies Medevac, Lifefac 3 at West Point, frequents the Norfolk and Portsmouth area quite often. We have a four-year-old little boy, and we moved here to start a seaplane company on the Lower Chesapeake Bay to bring seaplanes back to the area that once thrived here. It took us three and a half years from the beginning of the vision to become FAA certified as a Part 135 air carrier, which holds us to the highest standards of operational safety. We are locally owned and operated, and this journey with Portsmouth started over a year ago. We came in here looking for a conversation, and boy, did we find one. And it's been a journey ever since. But we have become fully approved by all federal agencies. We have the full federal authorization to operate from the Elizabeth River, which we have been doing. And at this point in time, we're just seeking approval from Portsmouth to form a partnership and to be able to dock in the Tidewater Yacht Marina as a passenger terminal. We offer services such as scenic flights, weekend getaways, fly-in dining, government and survey support, and flights and regional charters. Mostly what we run from the Elizabeth River is charters. Our tour operation is conducted out of the Yorktown seaplane base that we have here. The vision for Portsmouth is to make Portsmouth a central hub for coastal air travel. It's perfect. I think that Portsmouth is the perfect blank canvas to paint this picture for aviation. We detract tourism, local economic growth, and build community experiences from the waterfront. We will activate the waterfront, which is in line with Portsmouth's vision for the waterfront. These pictures that you're seeing here are not where our seaplane base is, but they are very beautiful. Those are on the south branch of the Elizabeth River right here. And our seaplane base takes room right here on the Federal Channel, just outside the Tidewater Yacht Marina, between Hospital Point and the seawall just on the outside of Tidewater Yacht Marina. Flying at a higher standard for us, that's one of our slogans. We talk about Part 135 certifications. What that means is that when the FAA hands over an air carrier certificate to an operator or an individual, it is not only an authorization, it is a calling for public safety to continually question our processes and develop more stringent and safer processes as we go. We're constantly revising our manuals. We're looking at our operational protocols and safety measures that we have when we come into a place like this. It's a continually unfolding wonderful way of operating. We get to build relationships, such as with the Hampton Roads Transit, the United States Navy, and this wonderful town of Portsmouth. We also have noise and safety procedures in place, which I know has been a big question. We can talk about that later on. a big question. We can talk about that later on. Where and how we operate, I've got a great picture here of the Elizabeth River, but we are designated to operate from the Federal Channel, which is outside of the harbor. We do not take off and land inside the harbor in Crawford Bay, so to speak. We, we operate, like I said, between Hospital Point and the seawall there at Tidewater Yacht Marina within the channel. We will slowly taxi out quietly, and then we will, we'll get on step and do our business, which takes about ten to fifteen seconds for us to get out of the area. With a peak noise rating coming around the Harbor Tower Apartments here at about eighty-nine decibels, which is a lawnmower, we're just heavy residential traffic, about five to ten seconds as we come through there. It is considerably lower than existing air traffic, both civilian and military. I could go on about the noise abatement, but I'm gonna let you guys ask questions on that if you want to. Growing with Portsmouth, this is a new era for the work and waterfront like I had spoken about. The final step is this text amendment and a special use permit that we'll get into. Ongoing partnership with the city leadership, long-term commitment investment, investment in the city of Portsmouth, partnering with businesses and creating jobs, and we also pledge transparency and responsiveness. If you guys want to pick up and talk, the phone and call Coastal Seaplanes, it'll ring the phone right here in my pocket. We're not a big company. We're not backed by big investors. Everything that you see us do every day is blood, sweat, and tears and my own investment and my own money. It's partly why it's taken so long. But that's who we are. We got one aircraft right now, and as we add aircraft and pilots, that'll be done stringently and very carefully. And that is, that's all I have for you at the moment. I know I didn't touch on all the slides here, which were used in the, in the zoning discussion, but if you do have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. If you would just remain for some questions. Mr. Moody, Vice Mayor Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and the interest in Portsmouth. I think it'll be unique. I do have a question. Are you restricted to weather conditions? And I guess, what I'm saying, do you operate VFR?
Yes, sir. We're a VFR-only company. If we do add IFR to our certificate, that'll generally be a wheels-only, airport-to-airport type thing. We don't operate IFR from the water. We don't fly at night.
Okay. And also, how many passengers are you equipped to?
Currently, we can take a whopping three passengers on our plane, which is not a lot. But we, we do run three passengers. The fourth seat is for me. With our current aircraft, we are considering adding a De Havilland Beaver in the next twelve months, which will give us anywhere from six to seven passenger seats, which will make it a little more viable for the scheduled services we plan to run from here to the Outer Banks in the summertime.
So you, you will be doing tours? Is that the gist of your?
We don't run tours out of here. We do offer tours, yes, sir, but the tours operate out of our Yorktown facility up on Chisman Creek at Legacy Marine. We do Chesapeake Bay tour. We do the Virginia Beach tour, which takes us all the way around the corner and come, we do fly by Portsmouth as we come in through that. But the frequency of a tour happens too often. We don't consider that appropriate for this area unless the tour is an hour long. So most of everything that happens here will be charters or scheduled service.
How far your charters go from Portsmouth?
If somebody wants to stroke the check, we'll go to the end of the earth.
Okay.
We, we run consistently up to Annapolis, Oak, Coke, to the south end of the Outer Banks, Roanoke. I've taken people into JFK, believe it or not. It's, it's, it's a great little aircraft, and as we grow, we'd love to be able to expand our services to encompass the entire mid-Atlantic region.
Do you see expanding to have Shucks tours here in Portsmouth like you do in Yorktown?
I think if we find it appropriate and safe to do so with the, with the traffic, rolling out seaplane service in this area has to be done responsibly and thoughtfully. Desensitizing the region to seaplanes is the, is the primary goal at this point. If we were to do that, it would be longer tours, so that intervals not, you know, these pop and drops every twenty minutes. We'd be looking more like hour-long tours. We'd love to be able to provide that if we, if it's deemed appropriate with current traffic.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Riggs, before I move to the next councilman, can you, Vice Mayor Moody asked a question about VFR. Can you explain to the audience and make sure that all of us understand what VFR is?
Absolutely. There's two primary conditions of flight, which is VFR, which is visual flight rules, and then you have IFR, which is instrument flight rules. The, the main differentiator between that is whether you're not, you're referring solely to instruments on the panel during flight. That's used for, you know, altitudes above eighteen thousand feet, and then anything that's less than VFR conditions, which is generally three miles visibility, and three thousand feet, which gets into marginal. I don't want to get too far in the weeds. Basically, can you see out the window or not? And that's a great question, though.
Thank you, sir.
Traffic avoidance is, for us, is crucial in this area. So VFR is how we roll.
Absolutely. Yeah, my father-in-law was a pilot with the Civil Air Patrol. So he was the only man that I would fly in a two-seater with. So, it's getting me, this guy's got it. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I was able to attend the planning meeting to hearing this, and there was an incredible attendance, especially from the local civic leagues that would be impacted by the sound. And the reception by the local civic leagues was, was very, very positive to this. They were not worried about the sound. They were incredibly attracted to the, having the attraction in their neighborhood. My, my vote for this ordinance and for the approval of the business will be yes.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Riggs. I've followed this very closely as someone who does live downtown and want to applaud our planning commissioners and planning staff for a very thorough job of asking appropriate questions regarding this business. I've read through the commentary. And the noise, as Councilman Dodson said, I don't think is much of a concern down here. We hear helicopters constantly in this corridor. But I think it is on everyone's mind and useful to hear from you directly. I know you've addressed this in the Planning Commission meetings, that this is safe, that this is something that you have checked with several agencies. I think it's valuable to add some reassurance to people who are just checking in with this issue now versus the council and the planning commissioners who have been following it for some time. So if you could just add some comments about what safety measures are in place and the steps that you've taken to ensure that this very busy wat- waterway is going to be safe for this operation. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's a great point. Is it safe? The answer to that is yes, absolutely. It's safe. One of the main reasons that it's safe is unfortunate history of the world that we live in, has been used to build a robust framework of regulations that we follow to the T. Part ninety-one, one fifteen states that we operate on the water, similarly to a boat. We follow the U.S. Coast Guard rules of the road, but at the end of the day, we have the least amount of rideaway. It's our job to stay out of everybody's way. On takeoff and landing, it's our job to make sure that we have a clear pathway for takeoff and landing. You know, as we roll out this seaplane dream over the next year, and we desensitize the public to it, it will become a reality. People will become more comfortable with, we'll learn a lot as operators. We've already made decisions not to operate during certain times of the year. For example, I just had a great conversation with the U.S. Coast Guard, and we'll be standing down during Harbor Fest, for example. I'll get to ride along with the Coast Guard and see what that's all about. Would love to see that place. I don't really see us having a place to land and operate in here during Harbor Fest. One of the conversations we had is establishing a temporary landing area further to the west if we do feel the need to do that, but that gives us plenty of time to talk about that and whether or not that's appropriate. Operating on the water, our primary goal is education, education. Teach people what seaplanes are all about. Teach them how they operate, how to operate around seaplanes, what we're looking for, what they should be looking for. And our goal is always paramount, safety. We cannot have incidents. We cannot have accidents. It's my job as the Director of Operations of the company to ensure that our operations fit into a community, that we're not shoehorning something in that's not appropriate. If we continue on to this, with this plan, and we continue to develop it, and we all agree at some point that this is not appropriate, we will cease operations. However, we need the chance to do that. We need a chance to make that call.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Riggs, for bringing this opportunity to Portsmouth. To kind of pile on to Councilman Dodson's comments about planning commission, seldomly do a long string of speakers line up and all support, but a long string of speakers lined up and we're all in support of your effort. I reviewed the package that you put together prior to planning commission. It was extensive, and so I can understand, you know, the investment that you personally have just in time in, in getting to all of the federal, state, and local agencies to, to get the checkmarks in the box. So, so that's not lost on me. I also appreciate your response to Councilwoman Bryant regarding safety and making the point that, consistent with Coast Guard inland rules of the road, you're low man on the totem pole. And so when I saw concern expressed from HRT about potential safety concerns around ferry operations between downtown Portsmouth and Norfolk, I think recognizing that you're only flying during the daytime, you're only flying in good visibility, and you're going to be able to see those ferries, and you recognize that you're low man on the totem pole, puts that entire safety burden on, on you in the end. And so, so I'm not so concerned about the concern that HRT expressed. The conditions for the use permit are really part of the next public hearing, but since you're here, if it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to, no, not address those now. Okay, got it. So I'll, I'll save that, that question about one of the conditions for the next public hearing.
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. I would like to say the HRT, they did express some concerns. We got together and had an opportunity to ride the ferry back and forth a few times. Mr. Deion Glover and Amy Brazil, we, we sat down in the captain's chairs up top, and we talked it out. And I sent them some information and some videos of our operations, and they did end up retracting their comment, their concerns, and it seems that that's become unexpectedly one of the stronger relationships that we have in the region now.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You can have a seat now. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing item, if you come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Attorney, City Clerk, City Manager, and rest of council. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside here in the Parkview section of the city, of course, just on the other side of Hospital Point. I would like to say that it is due time to come along and applaud city staff and the staff that put this zoning ordinance together back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten with a lot of citizen involvement, knowing very well that the ordinance and the city code is always a living, breathing document. And one thing Paul Holt, at the time, as a city planning director, and, and Ken Chandler all made very good comments about where this, where this code can actually be changed when necessary with either new ideas and new concepts. And so it's working exactly the way we all thought it would work back in, you know, fifteen years ago when we were working on it. And I, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that, that we applaud staff and the planning department for acknowledging the fact that this is a truly living document, and, and congratulations to, to doing that exactly the way we talked about doing it fifteen years ago. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, you have five minutes. Come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Is any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven, zero.
Our next item is Item D, UP dash twenty-four dash zero three. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item that we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. Downtown S. Riggs requests a use permit to operate a seaplane base at ten Crawford Parkway in the downtown D one Urban Core T six zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Bill one Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown uses. The property is owned by S.T. Tidewater LLC. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. And the actual resolution reads a resolution granting a use permit, UP twenty-four oh three to S. Riggs, to operate a seaplane base on a parcel heaven and address of ten Crawford Parkway.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Riggs, if you would come back forward, this is the second part. And certainly, if you want to go through an explanation, you're, you're okay to do that. In addition, my colleagues may have some questions for you regarding this use permit, sir.
Of course. The only thing I will add is that Tidewater Yacht Marina, Rick Monday in particular, I picked up the phone and called him in September of two thousand twenty-three, and I said, I've got an idea. He said, speak it to me, and we'll make it happen. This is a great city. And it has been a long journey of learning each other and figuring it out, but I am proud to say that we're here talking about this tonight, and I welcome all your questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, back to the, the question about the, the conditions. So there is a condition associated with the use permit that says the use shall operate in compliance with all requirements imposed by the Department of the Navy from time to time, including without limitation, the details of a letter from the Fourth of November to the Army Corps. So the mayor and the manager and I had the opportunity the other day to have lunch with one of the installation commanders who expressed some concern about the flight path down the southern branch of the river in front of the shipyard. And I know we have shipyard rep here, but I'll just share with you that the concern was raised to us. And so my question really is, so the Navy has the opportunity from time to time to engage you with concerns. Can you describe to us how you will engage the Navy from time to time to make sure that there is that pathway of communication so that if things happen, that, that nobody's caught off guard?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Mr. Childs is here this evening. We worked very closely on this for some time together, creating a relationship in a way and on a field that has never been done before in this region. It is a little bit of a no-man's land. I feel like we've done a good job navigating it together. Their concerns, from what I understand, reside primarily around surveillance and security of the shipyard. I have a lot of compassion for that. I think it's interesting, I've got a picture, you know, on my phone, respectfully, that I took coming into Norfolk on Sunday, from my window, same exact flight path, right past the shipyards on the south branch of Elizabeth River, going into runway five at Norfolk, just two hundred feet higher than our approach altitude. I think what we have is a surveillance issue at the shipyard. We're not it. We're beholden to the highest standards, and we're willing to play ball in any way the Navy wants to. Our communication with the Navy is wide open. I think there's a certain amount of information that they can help me with. There's a lot that they just can't, and I understand that. So I think what we're gonna try to do as we go is develop a strong line of communication, a strong relationship. You know, we've got our, our hat out to be a government contractor. Hopefully, we can build that relationship through that as well. You know, at the end of the day, safety is paramount. As pilot in command, I have full responsibility of everything and everyone on that aircraft, you know. But the fact of the matter is, is that we're a seaplane, and we belong over the water. So coming up the south branch of the Elizabeth River or departing, departing over the south branch of the Elizabeth River, whether we're landing or taking off, is the safest way for us to serve Portsmouth. And as the FAA puts it, to twist my arm into doing something different would be a shame. So what I say is, let's do this together. We can go hand in hand or toe-to-toe, but I would rather go hand in hand.
Okay, I appreciate your comment. Simply point out that you're obligated to, to abide by the conditions of the use permit, and so I just encourage you to
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
To be proactive in the reaching out part.
The, yeah, absolutely. And I, I think that Mr. Childs will agree with me when I say that we reach out to each other and we talk about stuff pretty consistently, as also with Mr. Steve Jones from Naval Station Norfolk. And we, we talk about a lot of things, and I think as this unfolds, you know, as this unfolds, you know, protecting our operational freedom is important, but we're talking about United States Navy here, you know, and there's a lot of respect that my family has for military. There's a lot of respect that this community has for military. We're here to uphold that. We're here to build on that. I just think that as we move forward, moving forward together is the most important thing. The stipulations put in place by the Army Corps of Engineers as a federal agency, we abide by those, you know, no more than five flights per day total for the company on the Elizabeth River, certain things like that. The Airline Deregulation Act prevents local municipalities from imposing certain things on air carriers. You know, it's not my place necessarily to make recommendations, but my recommendation would be for the verbiage to reflect the Army Corps of Engineers, just to make sure that everyone's appropriately governing this. And that way, whenever we make a change, we make a change with the Army Corps of Engineers, and there's not a battle between Portsmouth and the USACE.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor. Vice Mayor Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for the manager. What taxes will apply? I know aircraft are subject to personal property tax. How about the taxes on the revenue generated by the business?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Moody, I'm going to have to defer until I can get some more information on that. I don't have an answer ready for you on that.
I can probably answer it for you.
Sure.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong. We don't store aircraft here. They don't stay overnight in Portsmouth. Our aircraft are based out of Chesapeake. So as far as personal property tax, that would not apply to Portsmouth. However, we are seeking a business license, and so are the revenue that we run from the dock in Portsmouth would apply.
So your aircraft is based, registered in Chesapeake?
That's correct.
Okay.
We operate amphibious seaplanes that land on runways and water.
Okay.
One of the stipulations from the Army Corps of Engineers is no overnight aircraft storage. So we just, you know, and we generally don't keep aircraft on the water just as a measure of safety.
So during your non-operating hours, the aircraft will be hangared in Chesapeake?
At the Hampton Roads Executive Airport, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Riggs?
So a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
You know, I remember when I was flying with my father-in-law, it always troubled me that I didn't know how to fly a plane. And if something happened to him, it was just me and him in the plane. So from a safety perspective, how do you manage that? How do you manage, you just said you're going to be the pilot, and you're totally accountable. What if you have a medical emergency? Is there a plan in place to deal with those kinds of issues, whether they're in flight or what have you?
Yeah, that's a great question. Reminds me of that book by Gary Paulson, Hatchet. What do you do when your pilot's incapacitated? One of the regulations that the FAA puts in place is what's called a medical waiver that we have to have every single year. As a commercial pilot, I have a second-class medical. Third class is more for private pilots, second class for commercial, and first class for anybody running airlines or have had ATP exercising airline transport pilot privileges. So they look at my health, they look at my blood pressure, they look at everything. And this is not just me. This is every commercial pilot in the world. So that medical examiner determines whether or not I'm fit to fly and issues me a medical certificate every year. Now, outside of that, there's other stipulations. There's drug and alcohol programs that we are on. So we, as a company, have a zero percent. Legally, it's point zero four. We have a zero blood alcohol level tolerance. So that's every Part 135 operator that I've ever met. You know, if you've got any in your blood, you're not fit to fly. As far as drug programs, we're on a anonymous, or sorry, a random drug testing consortium. So we have, any given time, anybody that works for me, so myself, all of my mechanics, anybody who has what's deemed a safety-sensitive position, has to be on that drug and alcohol. We get audited regularly. We got audited last year. We get audited this year. They keep a really close tab on that sort of stuff. So we keep strict files on every single time that there was a non-pull, right? So nobody got tested. Then somebody does get tested, they have to have a drug and alcohol training. We put everybody, no matter who they are, what they're doing, through safety-sensitive manager training. So they're aware of all of the rules over top of them and everything underneath them. Outside of that, you know, it's up to me. We go off of, you know, is am I fit to fly every day? Am I tired? I've got a four-year-old. Some days, I just don't really have it in me. He's been up all night, you know, raging, being wild. I've called it before, especially when there's weather involved. You know, that's our responsibility. And it's interesting that it comes down to one person to make that decision, but it does. And as Director of Operations, as we grow as a company, it's also my job to make sure that I'm keeping tabs on my pilots, keeping tabs on my chief pilot, make sure he's checking in with people, you know, putting eyes on people every single day. And, you know, we don't do it like Denzel Washington did, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
In flight, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
As wild as it was.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to come and speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
That concludes our public hearing items for the evening. We're now moving on to City Manager's Report, Item 25-138. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of $28,960.59 from an opioid settlement and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS for approved abatement purposes as defined by the Virginia Opioid Fund and Settlement Allocation MOU.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-139. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional funding in the amount of $20,539.27 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and appropriating said amount sum in the FY 2026 Community Development Fund budget for use in implementing the annual action plan.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Next item, Item 25-140. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $2,400 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Social Services Fund Budget for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
Thank you. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-141. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting public safety answering points funding in the amount of $4,000 from the Virginia 911 Services Board and appropriating said funds to the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Next item, 25-142. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of $5,700 from the DeLong Company, Inc., and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 General Fund Budget for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
The next item, Item 25-143. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering for this item?
A resolution authorizing the granting of a temporary construction easement encumbering 11,596 square feet of 1227 Holland Road to the city of Suffolk and furtherance of the Spite Spillway Bridge replacement project.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Next item, 25-144. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution authorizing the granting of a non-exclusive power easement over the front 15 feet of 2623 Turnpike Road to Dominion Energy, Virginia.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-145. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution affirming and approving the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Critical Infrastructure Flood Resilience Study dated May 2025 and confirming the city's commitment to regional military readiness and economic resilience.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a registered speaker for this item, Mr. Tony Goodwin. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, once again. Madam City Attorney, Madam City Clerk, and Mr. City Manager, and rest of City Council. Of course, my name is Tony Goodwin, live in the Parkview section and also work in downtown, and want to say to this point, a few months ago, of course, the public works or somewhat session over at IC Norcom High School was attended by Councilman Hughel and just a handful of residents to see what this was all about. Because, let's face it, Portsmouth is, in its name, is a port and sits by the water. And of course, Hampton Roads is named because of the water. So we have the luxury of having water is a beautiful thing, but also can be a very damaging thing. So a lot of folks probably watching this online and maybe understanding the term resiliency is not just a term to use, but obviously a very meaningful word, and that is to say basically when we flood, we have to be resilient and bounce back, or prevent from being flooded and cause more damage. But this is more important because of the access to both of those, both of our installations, both the Naval Hospital and, of course, also the Naval Shipyard here. And it's extremely important because of our need in supporting our military. The reason I do come up before you here is, and I've had a couple of sidebar conversations with you, as you're representative on HRT with our mayor, Shannon Glover, this is something that I think HRT can really do a good job to do things sooner than later. What some of these recommendations in that study was talking about was raising the height of Effingham, changing parking lots on shipyard base as well as off-base to ponds and retention basins to handle water, either it be a rain or potentially tidal flooding, which we know we hit both of those pretty well. But certain recommendations, just at that meeting, is we've got to do a better job at street sweeping, first of all. We've got to keep the trash out of the drains so the drains can do their job to get the roads clear. And I think that's just as important as the transportation piece. But what I would have you think about as you adopt this tonight is that, yes, HRT can be a very quick solution. I am, I have, Mayor Glover has probably heard me say this more than once. I am up there constantly saying, "Our new riders for HRT post-COVID is our military families and our military personnel getting them to and from our installations." HRT has done an extremely great job at North Shipco in Newport News by bringing people to work, keeping them off the roads, and getting them there on time. And the morale has, I'm sure, helped in that case. We, of course, have parking issues, sometimes that have been going on for decades at Norfolk Naval Shipyard. And the same thing goes for the Norfolk Naval Hospital, or excuse me, the Portsmouth Naval Hospital, simply because we've got a huge parking facility, but everybody's coming all at once and leaving all at once. So that's a traffic nightmare I can only imagine. But to further this conversation about resiliency, in the next couple of months, HRT is going to be coming to all the city councils to talk about optimization. And so over the course of the next year and a half, we're going to be talking about how we make sure that all the bus services are doing their job, and we're getting what we are paying for and not having buses driving around empty, and realigning some stops and realigning some routes, combining some routes. So this is all coming, but we want to also take into consideration, keep this in mind while we're doing that, so as to where we can be a better steward, both with public transportation and also getting our military to and from the base, and oh, maybe just solve some of our traffic congestion during those times as well. So I thank you for the opportunity to serve Portsmouth on HRT, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you and I about this very important vote you're taking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was at that meeting also. One of the interesting things about the study was raising the roads. And if I understand correctly, and I don't know if I can be better informed on this, Mr. Carter, but those roads that were in that study, are you familiar, were you familiar with them yet? And aren't those roads state-funded roads that we should be seeking funding from the state to do, to complete the recommendations that were in this resilient study, this study?
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Not out of those. This is a study in conjunction with those military facilities so that we can make sure that in the event of some event like that, at least they have access and we have access also. So, no, that's not one of our funding sources for this.
The state is not?
No.
And does the state maintain those specific roads, though, isn't it?
No.
Okay, I thought they were state roads.
Not that I'm aware of. I can check to make sure, but I don't think those particular roads that they're, that's in this particular study is part of that.
I was looking for alternate funding sources.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Hughel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Goodwin's comments. The good news is we have the results of a study. It's specifically pointed to access into and out of these critical military facilities that we're home to here in Portsmouth. The bad news is the money that we got paid for a study, and now it's up to us to find the money
Yes, right.
to implement the outcome of the study. And the outcome of the study, good news, they broke the corrective actions up into pieces. I won't say bite-sized pieces, because every one of those bite-sized pieces is millions to tens of millions of dollars. But I think it points to, you know, as we're coming out of budget season, this is yet another pressure point on the decisions that council has to make for allocating our resources. We know we have infrastructure issues. Unfortunately, rising sea level, we don't get a vote. We just get to deal with the consequences and the need to be resilient when it happens. But it does add some additional pressure to the infrastructure piece of our budget, and we'll have to be mindful of that as we develop capital improvements projects. of that as we develop capital improvements projects going forward, to make sure that we're balancing capital improvement for the new buildings that we want, along with capital improvement to get to and from those buildings when we have bad weather. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Councilman Hugel, you are absolutely right. This was just a study portion of this. This does not provide any funding. However, the value of that study is that that positions us for opportunities for funding. Without that study, we would have a real challenge trying to get some funding as we seek different funding sources for these projects. But that study itself kind of lends itself to giving us a hand up as far as funding opportunities go.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, you have the floor.
Yeah, so, just in response to the manager's comment, I forwarded to you and to Ms. Neal earlier today, the announcement that the window is open for Defense Community Improvement Project Grants, D-SIP grants. So, D-SIP, because these are, again, good news, it was a defense study that's connected to military readiness, which opens the door for us to apply for it for other people's money, which is the best kind of money. And so, now we need to take advantage of that and walk through that door with the first of these projects.
Thank you both for that feedback. So, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion and a second? Who's the second?
Tillich.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to new business on our agenda items, boards and commissions. And Councilman Hugel, do we have any boards and commissions to report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we do have appointments to make for boards and commissions. The first appointment is to the Crime and Violence Prevention Commission, and the appointee is Darrell Redmond. Next, we have the Community Criminal Justice Board. The appointee is Ray Smith. Next, we have the Library Board. The appointee is Troya Wright. The Portsmouth Broadband Authority, the appointee is Genesis Thomas. The Southeastern Senior of Virginia is James Overton, and the Tidewater Community College Board appointee is Harry Hogan, Jr. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Any additional discussion on these appointments? Hearing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
We now move to item twenty-five dash one four seven, items submitted by council members. Do any of my colleagues have any items to submit this time? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec, to our police department, and really to the entire city staff that was behind the effort this past weekend for a very successful Yumauxa Festival on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then a very successful Memorial Day Parade on Monday. We managed to sneak the Memorial Day Parade in before the raindrops fell, and it was a really nice way of spending the day remembering those who paid the ultimate price on behalf of our freedoms. So, thanks to all the folks who were involved, and I guess I should add the Mayor's Military Affairs Committee and the single sailor volunteers associated with the Military Affairs Committee who also were very involved in the success of yesterday's Memorial Day Parade. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to need some feedback from the city manager on this. But in the items, report back from Mr. Carter, the statewide building code item, I have some concern that we have a number of properties around the city where the owners are saying, oh, I put a nail in there and I can continue my repair or building permit for another six months. And I've received quite a few complaints. I'd like for us to have some talk about considering modifying that code, as in other places where I've lived, to say that they have to have a building permit and pass an inspection every six months, or they lose their permit, or something similar to that that might be proposed by staff.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, I think there's a little confusion about that six-month time period. It doesn't reset all the time. It's a six-month time period, period, unless there is some mitigating circumstances that gets an extension. But doing work doesn't reset the timeframe for it. When you get that, you have six months, and the six months runs.
It's my understanding from a number of complaints that I've received that the way it's enforced is quite different than that, and we probably should have some discussion on that.
I can take that with the building inspectors to make sure that that is the way it's actually being done. But the actual writing of it doesn't suggest that you do some work and you get a reset on the time.
I believe that's the public understanding and the inspector's understanding of it from my interviews that I've had. So, yes, some discussion on that might be good on our part.
Okay.
I think the confusion is that the building inspector has the ability to extend that six-month period based upon evidence presented to them that it's appropriate to do so, and that's the exception to that rule. And so, what you may be experiencing is the building official through its inspectors giving people further opportunity to continue the work that they've done. In this particular case, that came up that prompted the discussion, I think the issue was the contractor passed away, and so, that gave the building instructor the opportunity to give them more time to find a new contract to proceed forward. What's been reported should be compared to the response given by the owner who's doing the work. And I think if you compare the two, the truth will be in the midst. So, I think we have to be careful just picking up one side of a complaint when we're talking about government action. But I just want to be clear that that's...
That permit was a demolition permit. I'm talking about a derelict property where a repair or a building permit might be obtained.
Okay, because when you started out the question, you talked about the six-month on demolition. So, I wanted to be very clear that the distinction is that the building official can give authority for that extension. The inspections are something different.
No, the second one was the one I was trying to cover, which was building and repair. They're two separate items. Demolition is one, and building and repair is another.
We can discuss this after the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to echo Councilman Hugel's applause for the Parks and Rec Department, adding that they also led a very fun, family fun day at City Park. I have a thirteen-year, a half-year-old at home who's hard to impress, and he had a fantastic time, along with his brother and sister. So, thank you all for that, and remember that the Seawall Music Festival is this coming weekend. So, we are in a very busy period of time for our Parks and Rec staff, and they provide us with wonderful events. Also want to give a shout out to the African-American Historical Society. Several of us made a trip over to Lincoln Cemetery and Calvary Cemeteries this weekend to lay a wreath, place flags for veterans in those cemeteries. It was a really special, really interesting event, and there's a lot of opportunity for us to learn from those events. So, please keep those on your radar for next year, aside from the Memorial Day Parade, which was fantastic and well-attended. These smaller events are also a really meaningful way for us to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our community, and they're a great opportunity for us to learn about who we are as a city. One other shout out, I'm so excited about this. Many of us attended the grand opening of the Bon Secours Primary Care Office that's opening right downtown here at the Mustard Seed. It's a wonderful addition as we're trying to build healthcare in our city. This is a fantastic new facility. We got to tour it. It's beautiful. The staff has, the medical staff has come with rave reviews, and so, we were really, really excited for that. I have already made an appointment. So, if you are looking for a new primary care provider, highly recommend that you check this out right downtown in the Mustard Seed. I'll end by saying, don't forget, also Clean the Bay Day is this coming weekend. So, if you or your civic organization is able to get out and help us keep our waterway clean, please participate in that. And to all the high school seniors that are graduating this weekend, please be safe, celebrate, and enjoy your time with your family and friends in a safe way. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, I can remember. But Councilwoman Bryant just brought up a great point I want to segue into as well, just again highlighting that we do have this great new exciting Bon Secours Primary Care Physician located right on High Street, making quality medical more accessible to our community, and that's always a great thing. We also, coming up, more exciting news around our healthcare needs. We have the first imaging center opening up soon, June ninth, I think, June ninth, June ninth or tenth, is the ribbon cutting, and that is meeting a major need in our community. Women have not been able to get exams in Portsmouth, so the fact that this center is also opening up by Bon Secours, I'm really excited about that. So, I also then want to segue then into something that happened a few weeks ago, of course, our State of the City, and Mr. Carter, the request for the, we had a great video that was shown that, you know, Portsmouth on the move, and I want to see if that video can be, is shared on our, I haven't seen it on our social media, but I've been talking to citizens about that at civic leagues, and just, again, drumming, a lot of citizens had great feedback, so I think it would be great if we could kind of just put that video out more. If it's out, and I missed it on social media, let me know. Okay? Thank you. Because I think that's a great way to get the movement out, and just the feeling that we're moving towards in our city, out for our citizens to be able to see. In that same lane, something that I know, it's a kind of concern for me, is just, we have a lot of public interest meetings. We just mentioned the study that was done regarding the sea level catastrophe, and, yes, there was a citizen meeting, I believe, at I.C. Norcom. There was recently a meeting for the public to provide input to our comprehensive plan, and I would like to get more insight, Mr. Carter, into the numbers behind those meetings, and if the numbers are not where we want them to be, us exploring how we can better get the word out to our citizens. I see the dates on our website, so I see it's posted. Everyone doesn't go to our website. I see the dates and the information posted on our social media, but sometimes it's hard to find. So, especially for the comprehensive plan, to meet our mission, which is where every individual feels safe and empowered, having our citizens really have a voice into our new comprehensive plan is very important, and making sure we get maximum participation, I think is very important, is something we should be measuring for the attendance of those meetings. So, I just wanted to put that out there as well. Mr. Carter, if we can get some feedback on the metrics up there, and how we can, if the numbers aren't where we want them to be, how we can better improve that communication and participation by our citizens. Thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. On a much more somber note, the Portsmouth family lost one of its longtime members last week, and that's Jimmy Williams. Jimmy lived most of his life in the Port Norfolk community. He also served as our treasurer for twenty-four years. He retired in 2018. And Jimmy was also a star football player on the undefeated nineteen-fifty-four Wilson Football Team, and Jimmy went on to play football with the University of South Carolina, and he was a star there as well. But he was involved in just about every aspect of Portsmouth. He volunteered as a coach on softball teams. He even repaired baseball fields. Jimmy did a little bit of everything. He also would call you for donations to PIT. He was very active in the PIT. But Jimmy, in addition to all of that, he was a father. He was a husband, and he was a grandfather, and most of all, he was a friend to a lot of people in this city. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to Jimmy's family. He will be missed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And one of the last things I want to add under items submitted by council, yesterday was Memorial Day, which is the day in which we give remembrance and reflection to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country and for our freedoms. But I had the privilege this Saturday of learning about a very important person in our city who served our city in the military, and I just wanted to share this excerpt with you, because I think many of us in our daily lives do not know these things exist and what price people have paid for us to have our freedoms. Here in Portsmouth, we are a proud city with a rich tradition of military service. We are a proud Navy town, a Coast Guard city, and home to generations of veterans. And among those heroes stands a native son whose story needs to be known by all, Sergeant Cornelius S.H. Charlton, born right here in the great city of Portsmouth. Sergeant Charlton served in the United States Army during the Korean War. He was just twenty-one years old when he led his platoon in a series of courageous assaults on enemy positions in nineteen fifty-one. When his commanding officer was wounded, Sergeant Charlton stepped up and assumed command without hesitation. Despite suffering a severe chest wound, he pressed forward to lead his men, taking out enemy bunkers and rallying his troops under relentless fire. With his last ounce of strength, he launched a final assault on a heavily fortified enemy position and was fatally wounded in the process. According to his fellow soldiers by his side, Sergeant Charlton's actions saved countless lives and turned the tide of the battle. For his extraordinary bravery, Sergeant Charlton was posthumously awarded the Medal of Honor, becoming one of only two African-American soldiers to receive that distinction during the Korean War. At the time, he was initially denied burial at Arlington National Cemetery due to segregationist policies, but his family persisted, and today, he rests there with full honors, as he always was deserving. His courage and sacrifice embody the very spirit of us in Portsmouth. His story reminds us that our city has raised not just citizens, but heroes, and it is our responsibility to ensure those heroes are never forgotten. Thank you. Moving right along, item twenty-five dash one forty-eight, report on pending items.
That's me.
That's you, sir. Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We've provided a report back with some of the items that you asked about and some of our citizens. That's before you, so please take a look at it and let me know if you have any questions. I do want to make a correction on something that I did state earlier. Some of those roads that we talked about are actually state routes, and what I've been told is that through our state of good repair program is how the state participates in that right now. So, we may have an opportunity to ask for additional funding, but they've already given us funding for some of that. So, we'll kind of see how that works out for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Now, we have reached item twenty-five dash one four nine, non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters... While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our speaker tonight is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, if you will come forward, please state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Sheila Joseph, 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I just wanted to speak on, when you riding from George Washington Highway going towards victory, you have the mama, what you call it, Chinese place, different other place, and you want to make a turn in there. The people have a tendency not to have something to instruct them not to block going, entering into those centers and different businesses. I would like to say that if we could get someone to address that type of issue, because some people do have road rage. I was making a turn, and they refused to, you know, slow down, so I yelled, you know, and a lady swung around me. And also, going towards Alexander, you have an interest to go into the doctor office. Same thing. They block the driving so you can't go to your appointment. So, I feel that I seen some signs above with the streetlight or somewhere saying, do not block entrance. I would like to see that in some of the locations that I see people doing that. Also, I wanted to speak on the city code. When the trash is being picked up and the recycling bin, a lot of citizens, I noticed when I ride around in town on Trash Day, they obey the code. They go and take their trash cans up. But one particular area, I have talked for years, up until this year, nobody have enforced that particular area who owns that building for to take their trash can and put it back in its appropriate place off the street so we can drive comfortably without scratching up like I did my vehicle. So, I want to see some more enforcement to encourage people to do what they need to do and not get away with not doing what the code is required. I would like to see more opportunities where I saw some of the trees being cut back, like we going to church and things, the power line. And then, in some of the areas, we have power lines. I can put some of the pictures, an opportunity for someone to sit down, and it shows how the wires are covered up with the trees, which is the responsibility, I'm told, that dominions every three years. Because I remember they explained it to me when they cut the tree down over in my neighborhood. So, I would like to see, when you coming from Walmart, I mentioned it before, that it's Commonwealth and I think London, it's L O U N D, O U N D somewhere, it comes into turnpike. And it's got a big tree hanging over the street. And when you come and you got to inch bit by bit for be safe to come out, to address that area, it's like an intersect. But the tree is blocking your view, it's very dangerous. And also, it can eventually fall and injure someone walking or driving. So, cutting back that in different areas. And I did mention about the speeding. And it's still need to sit down with us to kind of find out what they have in place. I heard they doing a study, but I never been a part of it yet. And I didn't know where it was at, to deal with it because it's dangerous. You got kids walking and playing, they sometime not paying attention, running behind a ball, somebody can hit somebody, child or anything. So I just wanted to address those few items. And I want to thank everyone that whoever responsible, I did complain about the tax being paid. Can I say this a little bit?
Please.
Being paid. And the history on it, and Mr. Page gave me a long, hard way to go because I wanted the history. Well, I can say the last few times that we've been paying in advance, they seem to revive their receipt where they can put the information on there, and I appreciate that. You know, so that the citizen can see, you know, updates as they pay, you know. And I'm still waiting on the 3rd of next month about the water software, where we at with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our speakers for the evening, and that concludes our meeting. Have a safe trip home. Meeting adjourned.